Come to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Mandy, could you please call and roll?
DeYoung.
Here.
Raynor.
Here.
Butler.
Here.
Carlstone.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
Dean Strickland.
Here.
City Council has adopted the code of civility as elected officials. We pledge to promote civility through extending respect to others. Listening to understand, disagreeing without disrespect, engaging collaboratively, and speaking up to address incivility. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and broadcast for Pella TV, so anyone who speaks, wishes to speak to council, please approach that microphone podium and the microphone before speaking, so that those listening at home can hear your comments and see you on camera. Can I get a motion for approval of our tentative agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
Ben Strylan.
Here.
Adam Hopkins. All right, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. This time we have opportunity for a public forum. Anyone wishing to address council regarding any agenda item? Please step forward to that microphone, state your name and address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Can I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Ben Strylan, Brandon Horst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. So, we're gonna get an update on the indoor recreation aquatic center change order summary. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. For those in attendance and those watching at home, Pella TV, and like to direct your attention to the big board for a presentation on this item. Mayor Ward stated what we're here to talk about tonight is just a summary of our change orders that have been approved administratively for the Pella Rec Center. Recently, our committee, which is chaired by Mr. Councilmember John Butler, on this approved change order number 11, that dealt with footage issues and also excavation issues and soil issues at the rec center, was approved in an amount of just below $20,000, as you can see up on the big board. Heidi, let's go ahead, please, do the summary. And as you can see, is what we have here is a list of the change orders approved by the committee to date. We have a remain authorization of $93,660. And the last item that Mr. Dean Strickland updated on the committee, and I don't think a lot's changed with the rec center on this. To date, approximately 350 of the 400 shop drawings for the project have been reviewed by the engineering. So we think that most of the change orders, the administrative change orders, are behind us at the date, which is good news for the project. In addition, contractors have been making progress on the project. And we believe that the project technically, the scheduled completion date for the project is right around May of 2027, and we're looking at beginning operations. We're fighting for the staff level to be July of 2027. And Councilmember Butler, I don't know if you have anything else to add from the committee?
No, you're up to it. Thank you.
So that concludes the presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Any questions, anyone? All right, we'll move on. Resolution number 6963 entitled Resolution Approving and Accepting the Public Improvements for the Molagroth Storm Sewer Improvements Project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Ward stated what this resolution would do is approve the stormwater improvements that we made down in Molagroth Plaza. And actually, what we did was we installed a rubber membrane or membrane system on the plaza that prevented, hopefully will prevent water infiltration in the parking garage below. And we do have the highlighted area up on the big board where the improvement took place. As far as the total amount of the contract, it was just below $96,000, and our engineering and project was garden associates. And they do believe that the project was constructed in accordance with the city's approved plans and specifications, and they are recommending approval. And the staff is also giving the committee approval of this resolution this evening.
Okay, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For Brandon Horst, DeYoung, any discussion? Having a lot of rain, so far it's dry down there. Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Resolution number 6964 entitled Resolution Approving Change Order Number Two. Final quantity adjustments and accepting the public improvements for the sanitary sewer chimp lining project. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. Mayor Ward stated what we're doing this evening is accepting the public improvements for recent sanitary sewer lining projects. And we do have the highlighted segments up on the big board as well. It is important to note that the city originally budgeted $300,000 for this project. All the adjustments that we're considering this evening were for quantities adjustments that were added to the project. So if council were to approve this resolution this evening, we'd end up with a final contract amount of $276,453 on this. And so, staff is recommending approval of this resolution this evening.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Ben Strylan, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 1079 entitled An Ordinance Providing that General Property Taxes Levied and Collected Each Year on All Property Located Within the Fountain Hills Four Urban Renewal Area in the city of Pella County of Marion, State of Iowa, by and for the benefit of the State of Iowa, City of Pella County of Marion, Pella Community School District, and other taxing districts, be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to an indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Fountain Hills Four Urban Renewal Area, the Fountain Hills Four Urban Renewal Plan. This is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. Mayor Ward stated what this ordinance would do is it would allow us to establish an urban, actually collect incremental taxes in this yellow highlighted area up here, and be able to rebate a portion of those taxes collected back to the developer to reimburse them for the cost of public infrastructure. A little bit of background on this development, this is Fountain Hills case four, it's a 47-lock residential subdivision. The public infrastructure cost on the development was roughly $2.5 million. The developer will be dedicating those improvements, public improvements, to the city of Pella. And how taxing and financing is administered in the city of Pella. What we do is as far as economic development incentives, as new homes are built on the development, we're gonna capture those incremental property taxes and rebate a portion of the property taxes back to the developer. From the developer's standpoint, it looks about half the property taxes collected over time will be rebated back to them. But the beauty of it with this, in this case, is a relatively low-risk venture for the city of Pella. And that we're only rebating property taxes for new homes that are yet to be built, and we'll only rebate those property taxes if the homes are built and if they pay property taxes to the city of Pella. But this ordinance allows us to capture those incremental property taxes for the new homes that are gonna be built on the property as well. So, Heidi, let's go ahead, please. It's important to note as far as the overall urban renewal plan area under state law, because this is a non-lower modern income development, we're entitled to have an urban renewal plan or reimburse it through the developer for up to 10 years. However, with an extension that would be approved by both Marion County and the Pella Community Schools, that can be extended up to 15 years. Marion County will be considering that extension after November 25th meeting, and we anticipate the Pella Community School District will be addressing the extension during the December meeting as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, staff is recommending approval this evening. If you want to have any questions, the mayor and council may have on this item.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval? Hopkins, Carlstone, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on, ordinance number 1080 entitled An Ordinance Amending Solid Waste Fees in the City of Pella, Iowa. This is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, once again, I'd like to direct everyone's attention to the big board for a representation on this item. As Mayor Ward stated, what we're talking about this evening is eliminating the vacation rate for the solid waste utility. And let's go ahead and explain this, but before we do, we want to make sure that council understands the ordinance that we're discussing this evening is the same one that we discussed on October 21st during policy and planning. A little bit of background on this, currently when accounts are idle or inactive, for the solid waste utilities, the property owner has the ability to utilize the vacation rate for the city of Pella. This is a reduced rate that allows them to pay for solid waste at $2.50 per month. Because of issues that we've had in administering the program, what we're proposing with this ordinance is to eliminate this, so this would be at the full rate the property owner would be charged on this. Now, currently, there are 91 customers utilizing the vacation rates. Most of those customers are landlords, and so what happens mostly with this program is a landlord has a tenant that leaves, and so they contact the city and they place the garbage services on the vacation rate and pay $2.50 until it's transferred into their rent or rental utilities on that as well. And so, again, when we talk about most of them, when we talk to the utility, county staff has told me that typically vacation, what people call is the snowbirds are somewhere between 10, 20 individuals on a yearly basis. And with this, most of the accounts that we have that utilize this are landlords dealing with the roof. And so with this, Mr. Mayor, we are looking to need approval. The ordinance is to eliminate the special vacation rate and just be standard rates for service for the solid waste.
All right, can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For Hopkins, Ben Strylan, any discussion?
I suppose when they leave, they leave for two, three months or more.
If it adds on the individual, that's one of the issues in administering the program.
I have no idea.
Okay, anything else? All right, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 1081 entitled An Ordinance Amending Municipal Telecommunication Utility Rates in the City of Pella, Iowa. This is the second reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item. It's very similar, or as to what we just recently passed in the second reading to the solid waste utility. This one deals with Pella fiber that lets customers utilize a vacation rate of $10 per month per service at the city of Pella. And once again, the reasoning for this proposed ordinance is similar to the solid waste utility. Currently, there's 19 customers that utilize vacation rates, which is less than 1% of the utilities customer base as well that utilize the vacation rates. That is ordinance number amendment number one to this, and Heidi is added to this proposed ordinance. Okay? Item number two is really just a housekeeping item that we have with phone rates, they're cloud-based phone rates that we've yet to adopt, and we'd like to start selling services on as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, we are recommending approval of the ordinance this evening.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Support.
Hopkins, Brandon Horst, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Raynor.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 1082 entitled An Ordinance Amending the City Code of the Pella, City of Pella, Iowa by adopting revised Chapter 76 relating to bicycle, electric scooter, electrical personnel assistant, mobility device, personal transportation devices, and other power-driven mobility device regulations, deleting Chapter 77 Bicycle Licensing, deleting Section 47.06 Skates, Bicycles, and Skateboards, deleting Section 67.04 Subsection 3- Use Sidewalks. First reading. Mike?
All right, Mr. Mayor, we'll try to summarize this, and it's important to understand what we're talking about this evening is electric scooters and electric bicycles on it. And I want to start off by explaining this ordinance that currently these items with these devices are regulated under state code. And there's multiple sections of state code that regulate these items. What we're really trying to do is consolidate sections under state code and put it almost identical in city code in one code section that we have. So when we look at electric scooters, the other thing to keep in mind, in particular, electric devices, is they're all regulated by speed. And what we have with this ordinance, there's three classes of electric bicycles. The class three bicycle, ideally has a speed limit, upper than speed limit that can go as high as 28 miles per hour. All the other devices are 20 miles per hour or less. Now, one of the items that we have is important to note that scooters, electric bicycles are allowed on both public streets as well as sidewalks on it. However, when you look under state code, there's some restrictions that the operator has when they operate on sidewalks and public streets. For most devices, whether it's a scooter or an electric bicycle, the speed limit that they could actually operate on a street or sidewalk is 20 miles an hour is what they're limited to on the except in the case of class three bicycle, electric bicycle, that's up to 28 miles an hour. And the 20 miles per hour speed limit is what we have on the chart, only applies to trails and sidewalks. So anytime you're on a trailer sidewalk, it's 20 miles an hour for the electric scooters on this as well. So let's go ahead, please, Heidi. I would also like to say, if I could give one slide back, I know I jumped a little bit, but one thing I'd also like to clarify, when we deal with electric scooters, is currently they are prohibited from operating on streets that have a posted speed limit of 25 miles an hour, 25 miles per hour or greater on that as well. So again, to summarize, a little bit of background of what's currently under city code, and what we're really trying to do with this ordinance is we're trying to consolidate the city code in one section, so it's easier for our police department to enforce regulations when it deals with electric bicycles as well as scooters. So let's go ahead, please, Heidi. I believe we said this here, and I know it's a lot of cleanup that we have as far as deleting sections that go to try to consolidate everything under one code section. But again, if you wanted to look at this item, it's essentially a housekeeping item, and for the most part it is, but we're gonna cover some of the new parts that we also have in the ordinance. So let's go ahead, please, Heidi. Now, one of the items that we have is somewhat unique to Pella is when we get around the downtown area and have scooters on sidewalks in the downtown. When we look at scooters or electric bicycles in there, they are not prohibited, they are allowed in Central Park. But the sidewalks that are adjacent around the downtown, it would not be allowed with this ordinance, so that would be the one restriction that we would have. We also have them prohibited on the tulip toron as well as, I'd say, outdoor recreational areas that we have, whether that be tennis or pickleball courts as well. And in addition, what we also have is regulations that would allow us to cover them during special events. And so this would be during tulip time, for instance. So that is probably the one new item that we have with this ordinance on here, is this additional prohibitions with both scooters and electric bicycles. Okay, let's go ahead, please, Heidi. Okay, now finally, when we talked about this previously in policy and planning, we talked about maybe it's a good idea to put a sunset date on this ordinance. In other words, that would force council to reevaluate this ordinance within a period of time. However, looking at it, most of these items are currently regulated under city, under state code. What we're simply trying to do is make, put one code section, so it's easier for our police department to regulate both scooters as well as electric bikes as well. So our recommendation is not to have a sunset date, but if you'd like, we could set a date and time, or we'll be sure to come back and talk with council on the regulation of this ordinance and also reevaluate it at that time. So with that, Mr. Mayor, our recommendation is to agree to the ordinance as written, and we do more than have any questions that the council may have on this item.
All right, thank you. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
For Brandon Horst, DeYoung, discussion?
Chief, I just wondered real quickly, it seems like there's a, oh, there you are. Seems like there's a lot of teachable moments in this ordinance change, and I wondered if you could just enlighten me on how we're gonna let the public know about those changes.
Yeah, it's a good question. You know, we look at enforcement, we look at compliance. That's a strategy that not only we employ, but most law enforcement agencies seek to gain, and a lot of that's through education. You know, I've always said this, it can't be done by the police alone, so it involves, you know, other stakeholders, our parents, you know, our teachers. So anytime we can take that moment to engage our public is a great strategy to have. So this doesn't really change the way we do business per se, it gives us a little bit more enforcement teeth, but I do think that there is an opportunity to bring back a strategy of education within our schools as well. And we can certainly, you know, talk to our leaders in both of our schools, because I don't think that this conversation is being had like it was maybe 15, 20 years ago. So it's a good point.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy? Oh, I'm sorry.
Say a 12-year-old's zipping along, clocking at 25 miles an hour. And their little brother's behind them, holding on tight. They don't have a license on them, you stop them home until they get there. I mean, how do you?
You know, every situation's different. Our officers are really, our officers are really good at looking at a situation, figuring out in real-time best strategy. We often obviously like to get their parents involved in that conversation, so we would be able to stop them reasonably, especially some of that age, and, you know, just start asking the right questions, making some phone calls. If we would want to stop that activity, we wouldn't want to just haul them in, because then, you know, they don't know where home is. That answer your question?
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? All right, then we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
Motion passed. Ordinance number 1083 entitled An Ordinance Amending Chapter 41 Public Health and Safety of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pella by adding a new section, Section 41.15 prohibiting camping and the storage of personal property in public locations. This is the first reading. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to explain this item first thing right out of the chute. The council is important to note, this is the same ordinance that we discussed on November 3rd. There are no changes to the ordinance since our last discussion on this. But as Mayor Ward stated, what this ordinance would do is prohibit camping and really storing personal items in public spaces on this as well. A little bit of background on why we're proposing this ordinance, there's been a few issues within our city parks as far as people camping and actually living in parks and shelters within the community. What this ordinance would allow us to do is have enforcement action when the park is open during daylight hours, as well as really the real driving force behind this ordinance. And as we said, when we look at camping and storing of items, so you're talking about living and camping on city property on this as well, public property within our community, specifically with this ordinance, we've got governor listed up on the big board, and a few of these would be any park or any publicly owned building, streets, sideways, sidewalks, excuse me, driveways, as well as any public-owned parking lot or property. So let's go ahead, please, Heidi. It's important to note that we did see the input of the Pella Community School District, they did review this, and they reported to us that they have no concerns with the proposed ordinance. Equally important to note that if we do have violations of this ordinance, it is a simple misdemeanor as well as far as the enforcement aspect of this. And finally, we'd like to state that legal council is the entity, the city's legal council, that has reviewed the ordinance. They also drafted the ordinance for the city as well, and city staff is recommending approval this evening.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Can I get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Brandon Horst, Hopkins, any discussion?
I mean, if we go back to slide, there were, we are regulating camping on streets. That's a good, that's a good move, in my opinion. Period.
Okay, anything else? All right, we'll vote on the motion. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Motion passed. I have a motion for approval of Abstract Bill Number 2187.
Move to approve and issue warrants.
For Brandon Horst, Ben Strylan, any discussion or questions?
I did see that they are purchasing or have purchased parts for the snowplows, which is good and bad in our mind. So I like that they're getting ready, I hate that it's inevitable.
About Thanksgiving Blizzard.
Yeah.
I just had forgotten that, I had a question about the Larry Bombers instruction. 124,000, haven't seen any concrete on top of the road yet on Lincoln Street. I've been constantly bombarded with, how come we don't have Lincoln Street finished? That 124,000, is that concrete underground? I was curious what the $124,000 bill was for Bombers instruction.
With, well, we'll give us an update on Lincoln Street, but the contractor has been making progress on it. It seems it's slow, we've had some issues with utility relocations on the project, which is somewhat delayed us on it. But that is approved pay application by our engineering and garden associates as far as $124,000, and most likely deals with the subways on it as well as the sanitary sewer line on the project. Well, do you want to give us an update on Lincoln Street, please?
Surely, any of our streets are a little bit like icebergs. Most of the activity is underground, and that's very much the case here. We're putting in new sewer lines and new water lines, and most of that has proceeded fairly well. There is still some left to do on that. And the inevitable issues always arise. One of the things is lead service lines, that I'm sure we'll be talking about further in the future. But we've been dealing with some of those things, putting in the sub-based drains and things like that. I, with you, would like to see concrete on top rather than things underneath. But as Jagger and Richard says, we can't always get what we want. But I do think this is for the underground stuff, it's giving it in there, and we are, I mean, several of us are out there daily, I won't say nagging, but they may. So, yeah, we, 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 time is not on our side, so. I don't know, does that answer the question?
It does, yeah. In fact, I drove by there tonight and said, yep, no concrete yet by Easter.
Yeah, we ran into an issue today that we didn't have the required slope on some of the sewer line, and so we've got to get in and fix that. It doesn't make sense to put something underground and not get it right, so.
And a lot of people don't understand that you gotta do the underground stuff.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you, sir. Well, what are you doing about lead water lines?
Well, we have a number of things on that. We are, there is currently an EPA rule, which of course has been challenged in court. But what that says is, we have to do, the first thing is identify where we have them, and that process has happened. The second thing is, up until November of '27, we have to develop a plan to get all of those replaced. Now, where they occur is between our water lines and their houses. And so the lead service lines actually belong to the property owners. And having a mandate from the government to go in and forcibly replace those is legally difficult, let's put it that way, against the court case. What we are doing on this one is, every lead service line that we come across, we replace between our service line and the stop box. At this point in time, we cannot, we don't believe, go beyond that. Although all owners of property that have lead service lines have been informed that they have them, and, you know, we're more than willing to give them information. We want to get the problem solved. We don't want anyone having lead service lines. We are focusing going forward on ensuring that whenever we do a street project, that is one of the things that we address and fix. That's a very short answer to a rather complex problem, but I hope it's given you an appetizer for what will be a bigger meal later.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? All right, we will vote on the motion to pay the bills. All in favor, please say yes, opposed no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Raynor.
Yes.
Dean Strylan.
Yes.
DeYoung.
Yes.
Butler.
Yes.
Carlstone.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Motion passed. Any council member have any other business you'd like to have addressed this evening?
Well, this is the last couple weeks that I've been bombarded. This all started with a high school project of composition writing. And, um, the thing that triggered it was the new lights over by Quayside. And people said, how come we can't get a light by East Eighth? With all the traffic by Jefferson and Middle School and so on. Anyway, I'll just throw that off this, this was writing compositions about improvements that have been made in the city and improvements that need to be made in the city. So one good thing down on the west end, uh, these high schoolers writing compositions threw this at me and said, well, I'll bring it up. And I know we discussed this probably, what, eight years ago when they added the four-way stop with the accident by the roller blade parked there. So since they bombarded me with it, I'll just pass it on tonight as if we have no projects to do.
Okay, anything else? All right, any member of the public have any additional, or anything you want to address council with this evening? If so, please come to the microphone, state your name and address. Please limit your comments to three minutes.
Twenty-five oh-nine school destroyed. I wonder what the status and schedule on the former childcare building on South Main? I see they're working on it now.
Yes, the contractor's back on site. We're still working with the contractor and engineer on the change order for the building, and also address the change order, uh, the schedule for it. So as soon as we have information, we'll be, that will be the council item. But we anticipate that should be sometime within the next thirty days.
Do you have any idea when it might be done?
We have an idea when it might be done, though it still is dependent on the change order and what's approved via the change order as well. So there'll be more information to come out in a short bit.
If you'd keep us up to date, I'd appreciate it. What's the status and the schedule on the community building?
Community center of the engineering and architectural design for that is scheduled for the final review would be January of next year, but the council is not really under final approval on that and authorization to seek bids. We anticipate that bids could be sought sometime April or May. If the council proceeds a construction contract on the project, that project could start the renovation in May slash June of this year. It's anticipated to last all fifteen months from that date.
Thank you. I drove down Hazel Street recently, and that sidewalk project turned out very well. It's a nice-looking project and well-needed there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Mary Ellen Butler, four oh six Franklin. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are endowed by their Creator. These are beautiful words from our Declaration of Independence. Our forefathers believed in truth, which is defined as reality. They believed that some things were self-evident, needing no proof. Today, there is confusion about some things that were once self-evident. Take, for instance, the word banned. It means prohibited, especially by legal means. In our country, there are no banned books. No library, not even the Library of Congress, can house every book. So collections are curated, chosen. Choosing books aimed at children with the goal of sexualizing them prematurely is a vile act. Our library has many of them. At a recent meeting of the Library Board of Trustees, the word banned was described as being conflicted. Words are inanimate things with definitions. I propose that words cannot be conflicted. People can be conflicted. It's interesting to see T-shirts with the words in place, and I read banned books, or libraries that promote reading banned books. Here's another word, independent. I began with a quote from our Declaration of Independence. Recently, in a public forum, the Pella Public Library was described as independent with more than seven hundred thousand dollars coming from the coffers of Pella. The library is very dependent, not independent. Also, our library subscribes to and pays dues to the American Library Association and the Iowa Library Association and follows their directives. These organizations exhibit ultra-liberal biases. For instance, local libraries can be guided by the ALA on how to organize and present drag queen story hours, and how to answer community objections to graphic books aimed at children depicting unnatural sexual activities. One more thing, at the same forum, a participant described himself as a follower of Jesus. Be assured, God will not be mocked. When Jesus said, let the little children come to me, I wondered what he spoke to them. Do you think he told them they could choose their gender? Do you think he told them to accept no limitations on their sexual activity? I don't think so. But that is what these abhorrent books promote. The Bible doesn't tell us what Jesus said to the children that day, but his words to the adults were recorded. I think maybe you are all familiar with those words. And thanks to the vermeer, vermeer windmill, we know the implication of having a millstone tied around your neck. If you don't believe the Bible, or don't follow the Bible, don't call yourself a Christian or a Jesus follower, God will not be mocked. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we're gonna move on to our policy and planning to discuss confluence agreement amend, addendum number one, Parks and Recreation Analysis and Planning. Mike?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'd be happy to explain this item. As Mayor DeWort stated, what we're here to talk about is an amendment to Confluence's contract with the City of Pella. For those of you in attendance that may not be familiar with Confluence is, is they're currently updating the city's comprehensive plan. Now, as a part of this, what this amendment covers is developing a master plan for the city's parks and trail system that we have. And really, what we're here tonight about is to review the amendment just to make sure that we have everything that we want to make, that we want covered in this amendment in the master plan as well. We'll stay a high-level overview of within, first of all, the fees for the master plan is twenty-one thousand dollars for the consultant to do the master plan for the City of Pella. Let's go ahead, please, Heidi. Now, we have our items in this that's included in the master plan. But in essence, what the consultant's going to be doing is conducting public input sessions, as well as analyzing the city's park system. And the purpose of it is just to get public input on the various amenities in town. And some of the vague items that we have here that we've heard at the staff level is the consultant's also going to be developing a conceptual for a plan for the west side trail. This would be a trail that would be on the western side of Pella and will connect the new housing on the western side, normally leading to the city's downtown. One of the items that's in the consultant's scope of services is the indoor pool, the current indoor pool. And specifically, we'd like to have public input on plans for the indoor pool once the rec center is open for the community as well. So they're gonna be taking a look at potential reuse options for the indoor pool. Another item that we have here that we believe is gonna be a rather significant item when it occurs, but West Market Park has served this community well for a number of years, but it is in need of repair and potentially might involve replacement at some date and time. Before we get to that point and actually schedule a replacement on the park, we'd like to have public input and seek public input on replacement options for the playground, as well as options for shelters in West Market Park. Also, what we have here for Caldwell and Rotary Park is just the development of complimentary amenities for those items that are currently in each one of those respective parks. Another item that we thought makes sense is to take a look at both passive and active recreational uses in Big Rock Park that are also environmentally sensitive. And finally, what we have listed up here is we're going to take a look at the future use for the, that Juana's tennis and pickleball court as well. And so that'll be in that area that will solicit public input as well. Now, as far as the deadline that the consultant has for completing this analysis would be April of next year. And for each of the items that we discussed up on the board, and what's also included in the amendment, they're gonna be developing cost estimates. And the real value with this is this is gonna allow us to prioritize the various amendments, as well as having public improvements on this, and so we put together an intelligent capital improvement program for the city's park system. So once again, we just want to make sure we didn't miss anything or address any questions before the amendment was, before we authorized Confluence to proceed with the park's master plan. So, Mr. Mayor, we're seeking input on this.
Okay, sounds good.
I feel that West Market is on the, on that docket. I would sit on the playground, though. I would add, not just the playground, I think the shelter on the south side is probably what has to do for a more than a birthday town. It looks to me that's not fit for much more reuse. I think there were water shoes involved in it, and I think the capacity of the bathrooms can be improved, and so, so while we're at it, I thought that would be added.
Dr. Carlstone, that's an excellent point, and I believe that very, I believe we have the shelters in West Market Park, but in there, it's just not up on the slide, but we'll make sure we have that in there as well.
And there's a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance of Bossland.
Lion's Park.
And if you're gonna plan capital expenditures, well, that should be on the list.
We'll go ahead and add Lion's Park as well.
Yeah, it's a good, really good list, and, you know, I get asked a lot about the trail coming in from the west side. That's obviously an issue, so this will be great for us to prioritize some of those things as to what we need to get done. These are all obviously good things, but prioritizing will be important.
I agree with the mayor there. I mean, people have been yelling about that for a decade or more.
Well, with all the new housing that's out there, and as it continues to grow, it's gotta be a high priority to get people into town safely.
Yes.
So I like, I mean, that's gonna be a, a big deal to get done. I, I say let's, let's get her to go into work. Let's get them to go to work.
All right. Okay, uh, second item is the designation of an official newspaper for twenty-twenty-six leading publications.
I'm actually gonna let Mandy Smith explain this item, so Mandy, you'll walk council through this item.
Sure, yes. This is a regular annual item. We have to designate a paper for all of our legal publications annually. Uh, we did receive requests from the Marion County Express and the Blue Line Register. That's why we have it on policy and planning. I will say, Marion County Express has been providing a service to us since twenty-twenty-two, and we are very happy with the service that they provide to us. But since we have a request for both, we're coming and looking for direction from council, and then whichever way you decide, we will put it on the next agenda for formal consideration.
Marion County Express is a lot closer than they have the contact.
It's affordable. The subscription is very affordable for everyone. In fact, I have a copy right here, and I, I did not bring it intentionally for showing, though I actually brought it to show a letter to the editor written by council member Vanstra, which is a very wonderful, wonderful letter. So, but as I was going through it, there's, it's a wonderful issue. Veterans letters to the editor, it is, it's a home, home's fun issue, yes. So I would agree with Harold. I'd like to nominate the Marion County Express.
Well, unless someone would have a compelling or argument to change, we're not gonna change, I don't think. So let's, let's bring the Marion County Express up for official approval.
Will, it's out there.
All right. I don't know if you have a list of upcoming things to, uh, we heard a little bit about private water lines, so we're already in the process of thinking about that. And you gave us more information than I think we had had that the twenty-twenty-seven is when identified, have to be identified, but there isn't really guidance as to how soon to have to replace it after that, or?
As it stands right now, um, the, um, rule from the EPA indicates that we would need to replace them all within a ten-year period. We've identified, I think, nearly around about four hundred lines that would need replacement, which sounds easy, but when they're underground, it's not always that easy to see what's there. And, and again, part of the issue here is it's not just what we can easily get to. It's between that stop box and into the house.
Are all of them, are all of the lead lines, the private lines from the stop box to the houses? Are there any spitty lead lines anywhere?
We have no lead lines. There is some concern if you use ductile iron piping, which we may have some around, uh, some of that may have been sealed with lead solder. And in, in that case, we would need to take care of that. That's really tough to tell just by looking, um, so it gets a little tricky in that regard. And, and the rules don't actually address that. There is another, um, category, category of pipe called galvanized requiring replacement, or GER, um, and we do have ten of those identified. But again, we've, we've, we now have our arms around the problem. Doesn't mean we've done anything about it yet, other than on Lincoln Street, any lead lines between our lines and the stop box we have replaced. And that is in keeping with these regulations up through November first, um, twenty-seven. Thereafter, if we change any of those lines, we have to go all the way into the house, so.
Okay, thanks.
There's a lot more, as I expect you would guess.
Yeah.
All right, thanks. Okay, any? Anything else? Otherwise, I'm gonna seek a motion to adjourn.
Let's go Dutch on Thursday.
If you've got nothing to do, go to the Dome on Thursday night, seven o'clock. Pella versus Xavier, state championship on the line. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. For Hopkins and Straylon, all in favor, please say yes. Oppose, no. Mandy, please call the roll.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Dan Straylon?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Brainerd-Holmes?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Carlstone?
We are adjourned.